I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of all, liberty and justice for all.
In a moment, I'm going to ask all of you to join with me in a moment of silence to celebrate the life of Ann Pruskinis, who was an English language arts teacher with us for 20 years. Ann passed, and in memory of her -- of Ann and in support for her family in their time of need, please join with me in a moment of silence. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the school committee who isn't already on the agenda? Not seeing any hands. I like the echo. It makes me feel important. Okay, speaking of echoes, we have some returning student representatives. So, thank you very much for coming back. I hope -- I'm glad we didn't scare you away last year. Ed, you were great onstage opening day. Isabella, I don't know if you were there, but Ed was very apparent.
Thank you.
So, why don't we start with North?
Thank you. Open house for Plymouth North High School will be held on Thursday, October 11th, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Parents and guardians are invited to attend, follow their students' schedules, and meet with their child's teachers. Parents and members of the class of 2019 should visit the Plymouth North website or view the PNHS Daily Bulletin Board for up-to-date yearbook deadlines and information. Plymouth North High School encourages all students to be involved with various clubs, sports, and activities it offers, find something that interests you, and become a part of the after-school community, or attend one of our many scheduled sporting events and support our athletic teams. Beginning this week, Plymouth North will be hosting college visits during all four lunches. These visits are for students to speak with representatives from their college or university in order to learn more about what each has to offer. A full listing of visiting colleges, universities, and the armed forces can be found on the Plymouth North website and on the PNHS Daily Bulletin Board located on our student televisions. Plymouth North and South High Schools invite, yeah, invite all College Bound students, parents, and guardians to attend this college fair, where over 150 colleges, universities, and the armed forces will be available to speak with. The college fair will be held on Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the Plymouth North High School gymnasium. The Plymouth North High School varsity homecoming game will be held on Friday, September 28th, at 7:00 PM versus Quincy. Homecoming dance is Saturday, September 29th, from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM. Tickets will go on sale on September 19th before or after school in room 331 or 321. The cost of tickets is $15 or $12 plus two canned goods. Check or money order only made out to PNHS SAF. Eagle of the Day is a way to recognize and celebrate students, staff, and parents for their accomplishments. Each day nominations are sent to Principal Parsland and announced during Communication Block. Life Touch will be taking student photos on Wednesday, October 3rd, and Thursday, October 4th. Breakfast is an important way to start the day and is available daily to all students from 7:00 AM to 7:20 AM. Breakfast can be purchased in the cafeteria or in the gym lobby concession stands. Students who receive free breakfast would also receive -- students who receive free lunch would also receive free breakfast. Reduced students would pay 30 cents, and regular cost is $1.50. Starting Tuesday, September 20 -- September 11th, late buses will be available on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Late buses depart from Plymouth North at 4:05 PM on those days. Principal Parsland offers a weekly parent page that provides information on what is happening at North. This is a great way to stay current with all things PNHS. Mr. Parsland posts through his Twitter account. Please follow him on Twitter for notifications of his page. We encourage all families to follow us on Twitter and Facebook and utilize our websites to find all things Happening Plymouth North.
Thank you, and now South.
Thank you. Plymouth South had a very successful opening few weeks thanks to our custodial staff for getting the building ready. All of the areas that experienced water damage in the spring are near 100% completion in terms of the rebuild, and it has had virtually no effect on back-to-school happenings for students and staff. Dr. Miestis's opening day presentation will be shared with all of our advisories this week as we promote this year's theme, "This Is Me, Who Are You." Mr. Hannah will be visiting all senior advisories in the first semester to learn about our students' passions inside and outside of school. Our staff has already implemented learning activities to get to know each and every one of their students. And Plymouth South staff enjoyed a full-day professional development on September 4th. The day started with a few interdisciplinary team-building activities and then transitioned to mini workshops led by our staff. The afternoon was a focus on building goals and initiative for the school year centered on social-emotional wellness activities within the various disciplines. Our fall athletic teams and marching band opened up a successful week and finally have access to both the East and the West athletic turf fields. Both are complete and all the lights are up and running. All student athletes are finally practicing back on campus for the first time in years. On behalf of Plymouth South staff and students, thank you again to the town of Plymouth, the school committee, central office, and countless others who made this a reality for our student athletes. The annual North South Captain's Breakfast will take place September 18th at Plymouth South High School. This fall's guest speaker will be Jim Bunnell, the Executive Director of the Marshfield Boys and Girls Club. Bridgewater State University will be returning on campus to present the Mark Anti-Bully Workshop on September 20th to our freshman class. Mark's bullying and cyberbullying prevention programs for K-12 students are unique because the services are delivered by trained graduate and undergraduate students from Bridgewater State University and a high-status peer model. Picture Day is September 21st in the Performing Arts Center. Life Touch photography will be on hand to provide the photo sessions. And over 40 students have signed up for our South Theater Guild. This year's fall presentation is a Midsummer Night's Dream, which will take place on November 8th. Commissioner O'Reilly will be visiting Plymouth South High School on November 1st. He will spend time touring the building, meeting with students and staff in small groups, and will get a firsthand look at many of the fabulous academic and CTE programs we have at Plymouth South High School. Finally, the Annual Pilgrim Man Triathlon Committee is looking for volunteers for this Saturday's event at College Pond. If anybody is interested in volunteering, please contact Principal Hannah for more details.
All right, a couple of things. Thank you very much, very good reports, they always are. Isabella, I'm really, you know, the way you said that about all the sports teams back on campus, that's real -- I hadn't thought about it like that, and that's a really good point, thank you.
We used to have to bus people to Forget's Field after school, and then they'd have to get bused back, and it's just nice to have everybody, you know, being able to do Plymouth South High School sports at Plymouth South High School.
I do want to repeat what we say to you folks every year at this time, that last year -- well, let me say this, last year you guys were very helpful to us during some difficult conversations we had to have about student demonstrations and the like last year, so that was really very helpful, we really appreciated that. So, let me tell you that if events occur this year, or if the student leadership has a concern, or if the student leadership has a question, reach out to any one of the members of this committee. And, you know, you sit at the table with us, committee members can bring it to the table. Don't hesitate to, you know, to work with us on anything that the student leadership feels needs to be discussed at the table, okay?
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is old business. Is there any reference to old business that we have to make here this evening? Michelle, Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to say that it appears to me that all the flashing lights are working, and there's crosswalks, and in some cases additional crosswalks, so thank you for getting that done for the school year.
Well, how many times have you, I mean, it's maybe, how many years have you been on?
Eight years, this is my eighth year.
Eight years, the eighth year's a charm, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, but it's finally.
I'll let you know if I see any missing. More flashing, honey.
Ms. Hunt.
So, this actually isn't listed on old business, but it is old business. I'm just curious what the status is of the Rotary at Aubrey Street.
Excuse me, the?
The Roundabout.
At Aubrey Street.
Oh, I haven't heard anything. I can ask and provide.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the timing, that was a rush, 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 so.
Well, yeah, I can actually bring that up at next Monday's department head meeting and bring information for next Monday's school committee meeting.
I was just curious, because the school year started and we haven't had a week in arrangements for parking.
Yeah, and I think it was gonna, yeah, it was, it was, there were some immediacy issues behind getting it on the agenda.
Funded, for funded.
The funding, but I think it wasn't going to start until a certain date, and I'll get that information for next week, spring.
That was the summer.
Anything else on the old business to reference this evening? New business committee members, Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to bring up, it's not, well, I actually should have brought up in old business, but to bring up what we talked about on Saturday really quickly, I just want to make sure that, you know, we've got full-day K, we've now have a place for our alternative high school, we've got South practicing at South, we have all these different accomplishments that we've been able to come together and do, but I think what we really need to focus on this year, and I mentioned it on Saturday, is the health education and getting updates on that and make sure that our students are, you know, have the mental health and the drug, all that education, so I just want to make sure that we're following that throughout the year.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anything else to bring up on the new business? Superintendent's report, Dr. Miestis.
Good evening, I have a few things to report on tonight. We had a good start to the school year, I think, this is actually the first meeting we've had since we did start. We did weather a few warm days, and we have three and a half buildings without air conditioning, and they did a phenomenal job just navigating those days. So, you know, they, it was a little bit trying in some of the buildings, but for the most part, we did very, very well, so I just want to reach out to our staff and students, they just focused and did a phenomenal job, and we provided extra water, and the first day I sent popsicles over to the little ones just to kind of.
That was cute.
Just to, just, you know, a little bit of a treat in the afternoon, but it worked out, and hopefully the weather will cool down here, and as we see today, it was nice and cool. We've had a lot of discussion about Plymouth Harbor Academy over the summer. Plymouth Harbor Academy opened last week, and they opened on time as we modified their schedule so we can get the lower level of 11 Lincoln Street prepared for them, and they are very, very happy, they're doing a great job. We had a little get-together with the central office staff when they came in, and it's wonderful to see them arrive at school, and the space is just wonderful. If you, any of you would like to go visit and just let us know, we'll walk down, and you would think that's always been a school. It's just absolutely wonderful, a great space for them to be. As we did discuss on Saturday, we are experiencing a little bit of issues, a few issues with our van transportation across the town of Plymouth for some of our special education arrangements. If our parents are experiencing any difficulties, please reach out to our Special Education Office to help navigate some of those routing issues, but that's where encouraging parents, if they do have any difficulties with that, please talk to our Special Education Office. And as Isabella referred to this evening and Dr. Sorensen as well, the fields were done and ready to go last Wednesday. The field, that is, the North Field was actually ready for beginning of school, and the field as you drive into the right was done last Wednesday, and it's wonderful to see kids playing on fields and just enjoying the campus as it was intended. I have heard a little bit of scuttlebutt over the last couple of days regarding the lights, and a couple of people were commenting on if the lights met the dark skies policy here in Plymouth, and it absolutely does. I think every time we have athletics and the lights go on, we do get some level of concern about the lights being on at night, and just to let everybody know in the community that the lights on our campuses, exterior lights, are off by 10:00 PM, and that's what we have stuck with. We do that at North, same conditions. So, the lights that we have are very modern and sophisticated, they do have the ability to direct light directly onto the field, and they do meet the dark lights, dark skies light policy, which is something that's in place here in Plymouth. And as Isabella mentioned, Commissioner O'Reilly will be here in November visiting, and he's the Massachusetts Department of Education Commissioner, and he's going to be here talking with staff, students, and he's going to be meeting with me and my staff and some folks from the 400th, talking about the 400th opportunities that we have planned here in Plymouth and things that we have for the future, so he'll be here from 12 to 2, and we're looking for, you know, a good showing of what we do here in Plymouth, and we're excited for him to come and visit. So, it'll be the first time in my time as superintendent that a commissioner has visited Plymouth, which is going to be a neat opportunity for us. We've had the Secretary of Education visit before, and he came when North first opened, but this is the first time that we have a commissioner come and visit, so it'll be good for Plymouth. So, Dr. Sorensen, that's what I have to report this evening.
Okay, committee members, any questions to Dr. Miestis about his report? Okay, moving to the next item, which is retirements.
Yes, we just have one retirement to announce tonight, Tim Ante, who's the head custodian here at PCIS. He's been in the district for 35 years and 10 months, which is fantastic, so.
On behalf of the school committee, we'd like to thank him for his service and wish him a happy retirement.
Thank you, any questions? Correspondents, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, we have two pieces of correspondence this evening. The first one's a letter from Dr. Lisa White, our English Language Arts Coordinator, announcing that Plymouth is once again represented very well within the National Council of Teachers of English with North High Senior Emily Kelly's win of the 2018 Achievement Award in writing for superior writing. Dr. White noted that Emily was recognized at last spring's awards night and shared her pride for Emily's accomplishment. The second letter is from the Chief Executive Officer, Jack Cuccio, I hope I'm not butchering that too poorly, of the South Shore Community Action Council relative to the back-to-school food drive hosted on opening day. Mr. Cuccio expressed appreciation on behalf of the South Shore Community Action Council Food Distribution Center and listed all the food assistance programs that were served by this network. He went on to thank all in the Plymouth Public Schools for their generosity, knowing that the donations of 1,097 pounds of food this year is equivalent to 900 meals.
All right, thank you for that report. The next item on our agenda is to discuss two requests for overnight field trips, Dr. Miestis.
Yes, tonight we have the first of two field trip requests. This one is an out-of-state field trip to New York City, and we have Allison Schabert and Erica, Eric Walker here to present, and also Sarah Cullen here to represent the South High School group that is actually going to, looking towards going on this trip, so I'd like them to come up now and give us a little bit of an overview of the opportunity, and I believe it's to see To Kill a Mockingbird. So, we have our South staff here.
And while you're coming to the table, let me tell you that I felt that the backup information that you provided with the request for the field trip was excellent.
Thank you.
We've done this before with our AP Literature and AP Psychology students, and we offer them a one-day trip to New York City. In this case, we're to see the Broadway debut of To Kill a Mockingbird, which is expected to be one of the biggest hits on Broadway this year. Obviously, To Kill a Mockingbird is a timeless classic. This is in our curriculum, it allows our students, and as you've seen in our report, it allows our students to both see a play, which is integral in AP Literature's curriculum. They ask students to find a play in your area, or that the students normally would not be able to see, and take students physically out of the building to see a play, so that it's a directive by the AP Committee. And then it also works really well with the thematic units that we do in both Literature and Psychology, that Allison could talk about. We selected a Wednesday half-day, that's because there's both matinees for this performance in New York, but also that increases time on learning, so students are only missing a half-day as opposed to a full day. So, that's kind of some of our thinking. We did this a few years ago, and it seemed to be a very good timed field trip, so it provided the minimal disruption for the students while giving them the most benefit academically.
Yes, so we were able to secure tentatively, barring your approval, of course, 100 tickets. We haven't paid for them, they can go to the wayside if we don't use them, but because we called so early, we were able to get tickets for $39, which is pretty amazing for a Broadway show. When we took this trip in 2015 and 2016, the total cost for our students was $129, and the cost for this field trip is only $95 because we were able to get, you know, student-priced tickets well enough in advance, so we're here to answer any questions that you may have. As always, Plymouth South has, you know, is willing to work with a student who isn't able to afford, but still, of course, wants to attend. We're very good at that, we've helped students go on on all of the trips that Eric and I have planned, and that certainly hasn't changed in the last few years, so we can answer any questions that you may have.
Committee members. Ms. Badger.
I'd just like to move that we approved the field trip, and I'd like to come with you. We can take that off the motion.
Yeah, if we could go, then we'll vote on it, if we can't go, forget it.
A condition of approval.
Okay.
You know, they're commenting about going with you, but it is a grueling trip, it's 6:00 AM in the morning, all day long, on the bus and back, yes.
Yeah, it's.
Yes.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Hunt. Any questions on the motion? Okay, we can take the vote. Everybody has voted in favor?
So fancy now, we're like, it's like I'm at the State House.
Yeah, a little dramatic for you.
But I am impressed.
You shouldn't be, because it doesn't always work.
Well, it did tonight, and that's all that matters.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we have a second request, Dr. Miestis.
Yes, tonight we have a request for New York City once again, and this is Plymouth North High School, April 5th through 7th. We have Dave Grossman and Jason Luciana here tonight to present information on their opportunity, and this is actually both schools, yeah, both North and South, so.
And while you're coming to the table, I want to tell you, I also felt that the background information you provided with the request was very helpful to us.
Oh, great, great, thank you, Dr. Sorensen. Hello, everyone, I hope everyone's doing well. Yes, as Dr. Miestis mentioned, we're here to talk about an out-of-state overnight field trip. In the recent past, we've tried to do instrumental band trips every other year and chorus trips every other year. We do those combined, we try to combine with North High School and South High School, and even though some of those ensembles aren't connected directly, they do have that shared experience of travel and learning on the road that we think is very valuable in keeping those connections. So, we have before you a two-night, three-day trip, April 5th, April 5th through the 7th to New York City. It is the cultural and artistic hub of the world, quite frankly. If anybody would like to debate that, that's fine. And so, it's, again, it's two nights, it is music study, music performance, cultural study, and historic study, and performance as well. We, just, if this, if we are lucky, as in the previous guests who get this approved, we just made a deal that we're going to go on each other's trips, so we just did that, because that sounds absolutely amazing as well. But that's kind of the big picture. I wonder if Mr. Grossman could talk a little bit about details for the itinerary for the trip?
Yeah, so basically, we would depart from Plymouth in the morning of the 5th. When we get to New York, we are, we're still looking, we're working with the travel agent to secure a venue, but a venue for our choral groups to perform. One of the places that we're trying to contact is the United Nations Building, which would be pretty cool if we get that. There's going to be some time to visit Rockefeller Center, dinner in Times Square, we'll be staying in a hotel in New Jersey. On the second day, we will be going out to the Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, which the last time, I think, that we went to New York, the Statue of Liberty was closed for, yeah, they were working on it, so it'll be cool to go there. And we're going to be doing some performing there as well. We're going to come back and visit the September 11th Memorial, and that evening, go to one of my favorite places in the world, medieval times, dinner and tournament. And then the next day, we are going to do a choral/Broadway workshop with a New York City, like Broadway music director and actor, hopefully to be tied in with the show that we're going to be seeing, which is, I don't think it's written in there, but we're going to be seeing the band's visit. It won the Tony this year for Best Musical. It's a fantastic show with very different music than what's kind of expected in Broadway shows, and it's very, I think, culturally relevant to our society and our time today. And then we will come back to Plymouth on Sunday night, and that's the bulk of the trip.
As always, there's a lot of fundraising planned to reduce the cost of the trip, and we do have funds available for scholarship for students that can't afford it. Ms. Schaefer mentioned that earlier, we second that. The district in general, North-South, if there's a student, and we usually do, that needs some scholarships and help, we are in a position to be able to offer those scholarships to those students, so they are able to take part in the trip as well. So, we're here, answer any questions you might have, and ask for your approval.
Okay, committee members. Ms. Hunt.
Just a comment, if I have a really silly grin on my face, just a few years ago when I was in high school here in Plymouth, I was in the marching band, and I think I went, I had the exact same itinerary. We played at the Statue of Liberty, we played at the United Nations, we ate in Chinatown, we didn't eat in Times Square, but, you know, I still remember it, years later, so it's cool to see this.
Yeah, thank you, it's nice we have such.
Same, almost the same itinerary, it's crazy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great cultural asset that we're so close, five hours away by car, and giving these students of Plymouth, you know, a little scene into a big world. We think it's important.
Right, several times in your paperwork, you said to apply performance techniques to be able to do that in New York City, to say, "I've done that," is a really boost for the program, and I think it's fantastic. Plus, I think they're going to learn a lot with your itinerary.
Absolutely.
Apparently, Ms. Hunt learned a lot, she just told us.
I did, I still remember it, it's only been 30-something years, so.
Mrs. Burgess moves the approval of the overnight field trip to New York City. Is there a second? Ms. Hunt is the second, is there a question on the motion? Okay, please vote. Okay, you guys are going.
Great, thank you so much for the support, appreciate it.
Have a good evening. The overbearing superintendent's checklist.
Yes, the superintendent's checklist is up and ready. We actually distributed this to our administrators on Friday, and this checklist, for those of you that are unfamiliar, is a document that the state of the Department of Education puts out, and these are the obligations that we have by the district to submit information to the Department of Education. It's pretty complex, it's very detailed. What Ms. Liskoff did in our office is she actually broke it out into who has responsibility for each area. So, it could be principals, it could be directors, it could be my office, it could be Dr. Campbell, it could be Mr. Costin, it depends what area of concentration it is. So, if anything ever comes up during the school year relative to different reports or different items that are benchmark moments that the Department of Education would like us to report on or provide information, you can actually pull this out and see who's responsible with the department and actually how we manage that. So, it's for your review and for you to have as a resource.
Okay, any committee members with questions or comments about that checklist? Okay, thank you for that report. Fundraising activities? Fundraising activities? Dr. Campbell.
Yeah, this was, we actually tabled this from our last school committee meeting, so I wanted, we wanted to present this to you this evening. This is a summary of all of our fundraising activities from last school year, from the 2017-18. So you can see, for your reference, not only the descriptions of the fundraisers which you see, but also the gross and net returns, as well as the return in investment for those. So we share this with the schools and for the organizations, so they can see how their fundraisers went, use that for their own record-keeping. But you can see a lot of fundraising took place last year, as you can see from this document. And in the back, the very final page gives you a summary of a breakdown of the schools.
Okay, committee members with questions, observations, comments about fundraising from last year? Does it ever come to your office? Do you, now, do you, does your office ever make a recommendation of particular fundraising that should not be repeated?
Only if the nature of the activity isn't appropriate would we do that. Try not to, especially in PTAs and those organizations. If it's a school, if it's, PTA, no. We've never done that for PTA. You really feel that it's their responsibility, their right to do fundraising that they feel is appropriate for them. And I think pretty much, having been a principal and sat in on PTA meetings for many, many years, you know, those boards and the individuals will know, well, it went well this year, but it didn't go well this year. We're not going to repeat that. So they've become pretty attuned to what works and what doesn't. And honestly, some of the fundraisers that don't make a lot of money are just good traditions that are in place. It has really nothing to do with funds, although they do bring in funds. The nature of that activity isn't about the funds, it's more about the activity. So we do make recommendations from time to time for our schools and the departments within the schools of our PTAs. It's more about sharing that information and looking at the appropriateness of the activity as it relates to our student involvement.
You know, one of our most successful fundraisers is the carnival that occurs on the grounds of this building.
Yes, very successful.
But this summer, we know there were some tragedies at those traveling carnivals when the rides broke down and people got hurt. And, you know, it's very rare. It hardly ever happens, but it just crossed my mind that, I don't know.
Yeah, so with those activities, I can tell you that the business of, Mr. Kostin's office is very involved before those activities are approved, because it is our school, our school grounds, and looking for liability insurance and making sure that the nature of the expectations are reasonable enough, not only for the individual organization that's running it, but for the school department as well. So we have to keep a watchful eye out for those things, for sure.
All right. Ms. Hunt.
I just, I have another comment, but on that note, PTAs are required to have their own insurance above and beyond the school, and they can get a rider when they have an event like this, too, that helps cover them. But they're usually insured separately of the school anyways for day-to-day activities. If somebody gets hurt at a PTA meeting, it could hurt them, so.
Yeah, my thinking wasn't about the insurance. My thinking was about having somebody get seriously hurt on a traveling ride. But it is rare, and, you know, we can't run our life on rare events, I guess. But go ahead.
So one thing that I noticed, too, and I've heard about this in other schools, and I've heard about it done before, but it looks like it was pretty successful. I know Nathaniel Morton did a, like, an unfundraiser, we used to call them, where to, like, basically, to get the parents off the hook and say, "We're not going to bother you all year. You can give us $20." And it looks like they made, like, $4,700 doing that. So that's something to consider. You know, the parents don't need to worry about collecting money or buying products. They just give 20, and it goes to the school, and 100% of the profits.
Neat of mine, just to write that check and...
Yeah, 100%.
100% of the proceeds are going to...
100%. You can't get a better fundraiser than 100%.
It's called contributions.
I don't know if I missed, if anybody else did it, but I just saw Nathaniel Morton. So, yeah, they called it "20 is Plenty," but we've always called them unfoundraisers or things like that.
Yeah, you see, there are many districts and PTAs that will do that.
Yeah, I've heard about it for years. I just didn't realize that we had done it, so.
Ms. Badger. I thought I saw your hand glove.
Well, you did. I was just going to say that not that it is, not that, saying that nothing will happen at one of our events, but I know that in Massachusetts, our regulations are a bit higher than in some of the states that have frequent accidents.
Oh, that's good to know.
Rare accidents. That's it.
Okay.
If I could just add to that, one of the things that I'm not sure everyone knows is that inspectional services from the town of Plymouth comes and inspects everything before they actually open. So there's some level of oversight when they come in. So I do know that's...
That's good to know, that, plus what Ms. Badger said.
It's a permitting feature.
Okay, thank you. Reports and proposals from committee members. I'm seeing no reports this evening. Ms. Hunt.
Well, I mean, just the DVC, the Distinguished Visitors Committee met last week, and we're just kind of wrapping up our trip from Shishikahama. I did hear from them, and they are sending me a package to my house with some postcards for all the families. I guess all the kids are getting together and writing thank-you letters, so that should be coming soon. One thing that we are going to start doing for next year, and this could possibly be the gift that we send with them, is we're going to try and create a yearbook. And so we're going to start, and maybe Mrs. Burgess can help us with this, too, is we'd love to get the newspaper involved and social media and put a call-out to anybody that has ever gone to Shishikahama. Right now, we're just going to start collecting email addresses and then decide on a couple of days when we can bring people in for some pictures, collect some group pictures. And almost like the yearbooks at the high school, make an actual yearbook, and that's what we'll present to them. We also could use that as a little bit of a fundraiser and sell them to other people that might want them, that might have gone. And just kind of a, "Where are they now?" You know, if you went in 2000, 2000, you know, "What are you doing now?" And we can present it to Shishikahama, and that would probably be their official gift for next year.
So...
It's what, 1993?
Yeah.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
We have a student that approached me a couple of weeks ago who would like to do his eagle badge on just what you just talked about.
He's hired. Is it Nathan?
He is in ninth grade.
Okay.
Tenth grade.
Is it, is it Nathan?
Yes.
Yeah. He actually approached me a while ago, too. So, yeah, he can help.
But I think that would be perfect for the archive nature.
Absolutely.
And historical nature of the relationship, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and it would benefit both.
But, yeah, and it'll be set up, just like here, but we'll have pictures throughout the years, but then we'll, we hope we can have a page by year, you know? And so we're going to just try and collect. Someone said that we, the school, would have, like, the last three or four, like, maybe 10 years, but after that, before that, it might be a little hard getting a hold of people.
Yeah.
Then, then good. You can send it to us. All right, that would be great.
I think it would be, yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we're thinking with the new, the move to Lincoln Street, the displays, there would be definitely a place for us to put on display some of the gifts that we've received, that we have in our safe. At our office, it's really difficult to do that. So I think with the new Lincoln Street office, we could do that, you know?
But we're just going to start putting the word out, and then maybe over the next few years, we can, I mean, the next few months, we can set a couple of dates, too, maybe to bring in people just for pictures or some group pictures of then-and-now kind of thing. So if you went to Shishikahama at any point, please contact me.
The earlier trips was before cell phones, so we all didn't carry cameras with us.
Right, right. I know. That's why they're going to have to be more...
Hard to find those pictures.
I have all those old pictures.
There we go. Ms. Burgess.
I said I have the, I have all pictures from it. Because back then, before all that, the Japanese used to take pictures of us, you know, what we were doing a lot, and then give them to us at the end.
They still do that.
Yeah, so we have those, and we have the ones that people took, you know?
All right. Anything else on the reports and polls? Ms. Badger.
I just, I know we've kind of hit on it a couple of times here, but I just wanted to say that the opening day presentation, like every year, was, you know, I don't, I think your whole point is to not have a dry eye in the entire place by the time you're done. But it, I think it is wonderful, and it's really fun how the, you know, every year, I think, the teachers and staff really take to the theme that you pick. But I think it was really fun this year to really see our students. And then at South High School, where they made their little, like, "This is who I am," like, their first-day pictures, and I just, it's really nice to see. So thank you for all your hard work and the students' hard work and that put into it.
Yes, I wonder what the new teachers think.
I know.
When they walk in there and...
I had one come up to me right after the assembly and said, "I feel like I should have paid for that experience." And I said she could write a check out to the, you know, to the school department if she wanted to, but, yeah. It's pretty...
Yeah, one told me it's like, it was like a Broadway show.
Yeah.
Unbelievable. I watch their faces every year. It's exciting.
Thank you. PYDC?
Oh, PYDC, wake up. Okay. PYDC was on August 17. I imagine you all got the thing. I'm going to run over a couple of items on it, because the public doesn't hear about it. You get it. And it wasn't a very long meeting. We started out with our mini-training series about youth marijuana use. I'm not going to get into all the things about marijuana, but the impact is, I'll mention. And it says that it can have permanent effects on the developing brain, because brains develop until they're 25. So youth use increases difficulty in thinking and problem-solving, and has issues with memory and learning, and impaired coordination, and difficulty maintaining attention. And frequent, or long, use of it is linked to school dropout or lower educational achievement. Marijuana also has been linked to a range of mental health problems in teens such as depression and anxiety, and it negatively affects a number of skills required for safe driving, such as reaction time, coordination, and concentration. So that was the mini thing that they gave us. And they told us about the summer updates on what went on and how successful those programs were. They're talking about strategic planning this year, about what do you believe that's been the most successful and powerful PYDC initiative? And by the end of the 2019 school year, what would you like to see them accomplish? So that's what they're going to be working on. It said that on a community update, the town has purchased, it's at the fire station, a machine that breaks down the needles into disposable paper trash. So that's pretty cool. And about healthy updates, we have the Amazing Race, and that's coming right up. I thought I got all my stuff out, but I didn't. You talked about that last time, didn't you? The Amazing Race.
I tried to have a team, but it didn't.
Yeah, The Amazing Race, which is, September 22nd, from 1 to 4. They can still use some sponsors, but the race is a, isn't it a race where they find things and do things together?
It's Gavin and Gavin.
It isn't a running race, running, running, yeah. So it's a fun thing, and families can participate, or groups of people, yeah, that want to do it together. So anyway, it'll be on September 22nd, again, 1 to 4. And there's an after-party from 4 to 6. So that's about it for the PYDC, unless I skipped, I'm all right on that. Is there something else?
I think, no, I think, and you can see in the attachment for the meeting in August, it's been a very productive year with PYDC.
Yeah, that's what I agree.
Right, as Mrs. Burgess said, I really would accredit a lot of the momentum around this with our new program coordinator, Kelly Maycomber.
Yeah.
When we received the drug-free community grant and were able to hire her and get her from the Brockton Coalition, she's really expanded the partnerships we have with Brockton, SAPSC, the Southeast Prevention Collaborative, as well as all of our connections within this community. She's, she does an outstanding job, and I was just saying to Dr. Miasis, it would be nice to have her come here and present her, you know, we could present her to you so you can put a face to the name in PYDC. So I'm going to put that request into her when I see her tomorrow.
One thing I forgot to say about healthy Plymouth, that's hopping on, but this summer, they had a farmer's market at Algonquin, so that was really nice. And four of the kids there were able to work up in Plington at the farm. So it was a great opportunity for them, too. And so that's it for...
All right, thanks for that report. Any questions? Okay, building committee.
All right, building committee. I'll just run through, because this, they were talking about in the new town hall, they were having an issue with the HVAC, and there's something about a sensible wheel. And the edge isn't right yet, so I don't know what's happening there yet. Bids will be returned, will be returning on 9/21 for the library roof chiller, and they'll have the roof finished by 12:15. And the mechanicals will be done by February, all on the library. The marine facility, let's see, attached, there was, wait a minute. So they're saying that the August 14 seaport meeting, they were talking about the funds from the Port Authority, and they thought that they'd get them around September 1st, but we haven't had a meeting to find out whether they did or didn't. So that was what they were working, so they went over the costs of it. And the North Plymouth Fire Station will be $7.5 million. And I guess the grants will come in at 5 and 1/2. All new equipment will be going over, they're getting all the new equipment going over to the new building, but not the trucks. So estimates on that. If anybody's interested, I have all the pooh-pooh about the fire station, if you want to look at it. I can pass it, actually, so people can see it. And South High School, they're talking about the fields, but they are open, as we know. All the fields are done now. Moving forward on the, they're moving forward on the parking deck. You can see they stopped Russell Street from running. Sometimes it's a little difficult for parking at the town hall. Yeah, you can't get down the street, and you can't go down the other one side. So it's like tough. So anyway, they're moving forward on it. The Airport Administration Building, they have a purchase order for construction from Rubicon. And the salt shed is on hold until the town meeting process. And they've decided that the Main Street parking lot that they brought to us was, is just too expensive. So it was beautiful, though, but too much money, so that's it. Thank you.
All right, that's a great report. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Any questions on any of those projects from committee members? Okay. Personnel, Ms. Frye.
Yes, we have a number of announcements this evening. We've had 47 certificated appointments, six coach and advisor appointments, 31 classified appointments, one leave of absence for maternity, and 27 resignations. We've been busy.
Any questions? I have one quick one. I know occasionally we run, come across an area that is hard to fill. Do we have any of those right now?
Yes.
And what are they?
Special education.
Special education.
Is very difficult, especially with the higher levels of, say, autism or social-emotional with a care program. Mathematics and high-level sciences, like physics. And we didn't have too many science openings this year. We knew them early. They were early retirements. But those, special education's been very difficult.
Yeah, I see a lot of postings for that all over the Commonwealth.
And a lot of our special education teachers get a little bit of experience and may go into a content level after a grade level at the elementary. So it's, and they're fantastic, but it's difficult everywhere. We're all...
Any other questions on personnel? Solar projects, Mr. Kostin?
Thank you. The Plymouth South High School rooftop solar project is completed. We were given a, granted a permission to operate by EverSource on August 20th. So that's been running for almost a full month. I will be anxious to see the production from that rooftop unit. Our next thing is to integrate the software so that we're able to use that for instruction and also to display it at the school, like we do at North, to see how much solar electricity we're generating, and to add it to our website under our energy page. As everyone knows, if you go there, you can see all our production from all our solar farms. The lights on the field, as we know now, are operating. solar farms. The lights on the field, as we know now, are operating. They became operational on September 5. And we're very, very pleased to see those. I've signed the contract, the final contract, purchase order contract for the battery installation at South High School. We have an anticipated delivery date for December. We'll be pouring the pad, and with the guidance of the NG engineers, that's the manufacturer of the battery, our electricians will be installing and hooking up the battery. And honestly, I know they're excited about doing that. So the final part of our solar project is the parking canopies, and the SMART program incentives have just come out, and we're evaluating those, but they're not as optimistic right now. We're trying to look at all options, and we'll have a report sometime in the future to see how we can make those work and fit into our financial model. And we're hopeful.
I didn't catch the beginning of it. What is it that you're talking about?
I'm sorry.
I heard what you said about, all about it, but not what it is.
It's the parking canopies.
Oh, the parking canopies.
The solar canopies. I apologize.
Okay, great.
So the parking canopies, we're sitting with Eversource for a while. Eversource has signed off on them, or they're done with it?
Eversource, yes, those are, those are a go in a sense of connectivity. The issue right now is really the, is the incentives that are there. They're not as high as the SREC 2 program, and that's what we were afraid of. So we're going to have to see if there's a way that we can possibly look at community solar, intertwining community solar, or looking at other options that we can, to make those economically attractive.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? A homeschooling plan, or plans?
Yes, tonight, we have 31 homeschooling plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and they have been deemed appropriate and met all the guidelines set forth by the school committee, and I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation, Ms. Badger?
I just moved that we approve the homeschool plans as presented.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Haywood. On a question from anybody? Okay. Would you all please vote? No, okay. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Accounts payable, Ms. Hunt?
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accepts and approves the report and accounts payable warrant number S082318 dated August 23, 2018, in the amount of $843,459.61, as presented.
There's a second by Ms. Badger. Are there any discussion or questions on the warrant? Okay. We'll vote then, please.
Could you remind me who the second was?
I'm sorry?
Who was the second?
Uh, Ms. Badger was the second, Ms. Hunt was the-
I was dating, sorry.
Okay, everybody voted in favor of that. We have obsolete equipment. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight, we have a few items that are on the list for obsolete equipment. You might remember, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we actually had some ice machines that were defective at Plymouth North High School. These are the machines that have been in storage, and now they are on the table tonight to be removed from the building.
With the pleasure of the committee, Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the discarding of these, the ice machines.
Ice machines. Mr. Morgan is the second on that? Any question on that obsolete equipment disposal motion? Seeing none, we can vote for it. And everybody has voted in favor of that. Is there any other business to come before the committee this evening? I'm seeing no hands, therefore we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.